I'm ready, if you're ready. This is a special call meeting of the Stokesdale Town Council. It is April the 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Called the meeting to order. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rigsby's going to do our invocation this evening.
Please bow our heads. Tonight, as our flags are at half-staff, we remember the Pope, the holiest of holy, on a day that after Christ has risen to give us eternal life. Please keep everyone in their thoughts, your thoughts and prayers, everyone that's suffering, and everyone that needs an uplifting. Amen.
Amen. I make a motion that we, excuse me, let's review the agenda, but I make a motion that we adopt the agenda for the meeting this evening.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Mr. Jones has just joined us, and we are just now voting on the agenda.
Yep. You see, agenda as written?
As written.
Then I'm aye.
And Mr. Jones is aye.
Mayor, I apologize for my tardiness.
That's quite all right, sir. We'll talk about this later after the meeting. We're going to open it up for public comments, please. Anyone like to speak at this point in time? Good, bad, or indifferent? Okay. We have with us this evening our planning director, Mr. Avery Chu. He is going to take it basically from here. We have a couple of public hearings concerning rezoning. If you would, Avery.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we will get started with the first case. This is conditional zoning case 25-01-PLBD-00105. And this is a, as I said, a conditional rezoning request to rezone the subject property located at 8070 NC Highway 68 North, located immediately southeast of the intersection of NC Highway 68 North with Bellows Creek Road, and comprises approximately 37.1 acres. Request is to conditionally rezone that subject property from its current zoning of CZ PDM, Conditional Zoning Planned Unit Development Mixed, which was approved by the town council on April 17th, 2008, to the proposed zoning of CZ PDR, which is Conditional Zoning Planned Unit Development Residential. The Stokesdale Town Council have the final authority to approve or deny the request. The town may propose additional conditions, but they must be consented to in writing by the owner of the property. The conditions proposed by the applicant are as follows. There is one use condition, which is twin home dwellings with associated infrastructure. And the proposed development conditions are, number one, that the development is not to exceed 44 homes. And number two, there is an included sketch plan that applies to the development. So moving right along. The existing land use on the property, the parcel is currently undeveloped. It is predominantly residential and undeveloped surrounding the subject property. There is, we contacted Guilford County Schools for a school impact study. They estimated that Stokesdale Elementary, this is for the maximum of 44 units on the subject property. They estimated that Stokesdale Elementary would receive an additional four to six students. Northwest Middle would receive an additional three to five students. And Northwest High would receive an additional four to six students. Again, that's at the maximum built-up capacity of 44 units. I want to note the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan from 2007 recommends the residential classification for this property. And I'll read the description as contained in the Future Land Use Plan. Says, "Within the residential area, the plan recommends preserving Stokesdale's rural setting by establishing a uniform residential density. To achieve this, the following standards are recommended. One, a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. Two, increased natural buffers along perimeter roads and entrances into major developments. Three, increased buffers and protection along creeks and waterways. Four, plan for interconnected residential development through street and trail links. And five, eliminate the use of planned unit development residential outside the town core." In summary, staff recommends approval of the request. Approval is reasonable because the proposed rezoning would provide housing opportunities immediately adjacent to the Stokesdale Town Core. The subject property also has direct road frontage on NC Highway 68 North, a major thoroughfare, which would provide sufficient access for the proposed development. Finally, the proposed conditions limit the number of dwelling units to a level of density comparable to single-family residential zoning districts, and restrict the range of permitted uses compared to the current CZ PDM zoning district. The request is considered by staff to be inconsistent with the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan of recommendation of residential. Thus, if approved, a future land use plan amendment to town core would be required. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, thank you. Council have any questions, comments? The meeting is declared open, public hearing. Anyone from the floor would like to speak in favor? Yes, ma'am. If you would, please identify yourself.
Yes, sir, good evening. My name is Amanda Hodiern. I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner and the applicant. My offices are at 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 here in Greensboro. Hopefully, this is familiar and expected to you as this is coming on the heels of the sketch plan that we came to see you about last month. And I do want to express my gratitude that you all convened tonight and met off schedule to hear these matters. We really appreciate y'all doing that and being here this evening for an opportunity to present this case. So as you've heard from Mr. Chu, this is a request. This is a request to change the zoning from Conditional Zoning Planned Unit Development Mixed Residential to Conditional Zoning Planned Unit Development Residential. So if we could go to the first slide, please. We're going to dig into what that means a little bit. What I'd like to lift up to you for your consideration is that this is a downzoning. The Planned Unit Development Mixed that was approved back in 2008 allowed for a mix of office, retail, and a whole array of residential uses, including townhomes, condos, single-family and multifamily, at a rate of up to one and a half units per acre. So not only was it more than residential, it was a wider array of residential and at a higher density than what we're requesting before you tonight. So our request seeks to decrease that intensity by taking this to just residential with one single type of residential, a twin home dwelling unit, which you see your definition of here. This is pulled from your Stokesdale Unified Development Ordinance, showing our definition there as a single-family home with one shared wall, two separate units, each conveyable to separate owners. As you also heard in your conditions, we have a maximum, maximum unit count of 44 homes. So that's a maximum, it's a ceiling, it's not a mandate. This still has to go through full site planning approval. If something happens and when all the regulations are applied and all the engineering is done, if that means it's only 42 units, then it's 42 units. It doesn't mean that we, you know, come any circumstance, get to meet 44. That's a maximum. This is also pursuant to the approved sketch plan that you've seen before that I already mentioned. So everything that you saw and looked at, evaluated, and approved last month is by definition a condition of this zoning request. So that attaches, it's a firm commitment. If we wanted to change anything about it, we'd have to come back through this whole process. So I'm actually also going to go ahead and mention now, we respectfully disagree with staff's interpretation that this would require a change to your comprehensive plan or your future land use plan designation. As you heard, that designation is for residential. And as I've just elaborated upon, this request puts, puts the use far more in keeping with that designation than its current use, which would be mixed and would allow retail and office. By changing it to a pure residential zoning, PUD, sketch plan, that eliminates those inconsistent uses. The one aspect that Mr. Chu read off that, that was not consistent with our proposal is that Planned Unit Residential should be limited to the town core. And this is no longer the town core. It used to be, when that, when that, when that was done. So I would submit to you that, for some reasons of compatibility that we're going to look at here in a moment, it still is very consistent and actually furthers the goals and objectives of your comprehensive plan. So if we could go to the next slide, please. This is just your map. The red star, of course, is where we're talking about, just north of here, along Highway 68, just south of the Blues Creek Road intersection, where the red star is. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is your current zoning quilt, if you will. So if you notice, red star again at the top of your screen, right across the way, we have mixed-use retail. So that, that's a holdover, again, from a 2008 zoning that was done when the town core land use plan designation was in place in this area. You also see that we've got a lot of residential and agricultural scattered about. You heard that in Mr. Chu's staff report. So by stepping down from that retail and mixed-use designation that you get on the major thoroughfare of Highway 68, and then stepping down to this residential product, and then petering out into that more rural residential pattern that you see, this is a very consistent land use request in keeping with all of the other established land uses and zoning that you have in the area. I'll also note the proximity to not only Highway 68 that we've talked about, but also your true town core and hub of activity is just to the south here, of course, at the intersection of 150. So this, this is textbook planning principles to put some density, to put some housing optionality right here in your town core. And I say that pragmatically. I'm not saying that it is your future land use plan town core. It is your literal town core. So that's why it makes sense to have this type of land use here. So if we could go to the next slide, please. This is our concept sketch plan. This is exactly the sketch plan that you looked at before. You saw it previously in black and white with all the line work so that you could make your technical decisions as to whether or not it met the requirements of the ordinance. Here, we're looking at it to really hone in on some of the features that it provides to the, to the town. So when you see the actual 44 units in the green space, that really shows you how this is an interesting and different housing option that doesn't currently exist in Stokesdale, but it maintains that rural residential character because what you see is mostly green, green and blue. So just 44 units, when you spread that over the acreage that remains after the right-of-way dedication, which this plan accounts for, that comes to just 1.2 units per acre. So that's actually less than the 1.5 that is currently allowed. It's right in keeping with that residential land use plan designation. It's right in keeping with your single-family zoning of RS40, RS30 that exists elsewhere. All this open space is commonly held, all the green and blue, everything that's not a lot, which are the yellow homes and the lot that surrounds it. All of that is held by a common ownership in the HOA. So what that means is that there's one owner, one entity, that if, if the landscaping fails and needs to be replanted, if, you know, there's trash or debris, it's one phone call that is, is in charge and can enforce the rules and expectations of the town, of the neighbors, and of the people who live here. As we've mentioned, this is 44 maximum units showed laid out here. You've got a 20-foot setback from the street for the individual driveways. You can see that in the little inset there to the right-hand side. That's showing how the individual lots sit. And they have the setbacks and the driveways that serve each lot. The required parking is met on-site for each home. We also have some guest spaces, just because functionally, those are always helpful. The maximum built-upon area is just 4.475 acres, or just over 12%. And that's well below the 24% threshold that keeps this at the low-density standard under your ordinance. And that dictates what type of watershed impact requirements have to be followed. There's one access point, as you can see, coming on and off Highway 68. That was studied in the traffic impact analysis that we submitted. Hopefully, you've seen that in your materials. So that's been studied and evaluated to ensure what kind of trip generation there will be, and whether or not that requires any turn lane improvements, that sort of thing. While that helps us plan and helps us submit a site plan, if this were to go forward and go through full site plan approval, then that, of course, has to get actually evaluated by DOT through a driveway permit application. And they, they have up until the ninth hour to say, you know what, actually, we do want to turn lane, or we do want you to do this or that. So what we're showing here with the right-of-way dedication anticipates what, what our traffic study says. But of course, what an NC DOT says when we ask for that driveway permit is what, is what will have to be followed. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is just the cover letter or the first page of that traffic study report so that you can see that's been done and sealed by a traffic engineer and submitted for review. And of course, will also accompany any future site plans submitted. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is here just for reference if we need it. This is the approved sketch plan that you all have already evaluated and seen. This is, this tracks and follows and is attached to this rezoning request. So everything you've already looked at and evaluated, the conversations we had about the septic system, about the way it's served under the creek, all of that is still in play and attached and becomes a condition of this rezoning. So if we could go to the next slide, please. This is some new material for you that we started to talk about last time, but it wasn't quite ripe yet, since we weren't talking about a rezoning. This is the, the homes that the applicant here and the property owner wants to build. So we talked about this being a unique housing product. The uniquity, or the, the new option here, is that they're twin homes. They're attached just by that one wall, not townhomes. It's just two twin homes. We used to call it a duplex formerly, you may know it by that. So it's just that one shared wall. And by that, by doing that, we get to have some neat features for folks that maybe aren't anymore, or that want some more low-maintenance or different, different styles of living, but still want to have the appearance and the feel of a single-family neighborhood. And this, this provides that. This provides a nice, a nice way to perhaps change, change your living style, your home-life routine without having to leave Stokesdale. This way, if you, you know, you stay near your church, you stay near your kids, your friends, your community, but still get the chance to perhaps spend your Saturdays doing something different besides mowing the lawn. So if we could just go through a couple of these provided, I think four here. You can just scroll through, please. Four different ways that this could manifest. These are all actual products built by the builder. If you've ever been out to Grandover, you've seen this product there. This exists there and has been very successful. So these actually exist in real life. All the different types of facade materials that you see, the masonry, be it brick, be it stone, the board and batten, the shingles, all of that can be mixed and matched. And the builder has a requirement that if I buy Lot 43 and I choose this iteration, then my neighbor to either side and across the street, three houses across the street can't choose that same iteration. So what that means is that you get variability. You get, you have an assurance that you're not going to have the exact same home built beside of each other. So again, that's bringing forward those traits and that organicness that we're used to seeing in single-family neighborhoods. You can see each home has its own driveway, has its own garage. These are two-car garages, two-car driveways, full-length. So that's four cars that can be parked without impacting the roadways or the sidewalks. This is a sidewalk community at each, at each home. You see the gableing, the eaves, the front, covered front porch, the landscaping, all, all architectural vernacular that's been pulled from the area to make this very much in keeping and stylistically harmonious with, with what we think residents and home buyers in Stokesdale have been asking for. Mr. Combs, one of the principals here in this community, is doing this specifically because people have been asking for it. Give us, give us a neighborhood that feels like home, feels like Stokesdale, but where we don't have to maintain the yard, where we can, you know, have, have a little bit more of a maintenance-free lifestyle. So that was the goal here, and that was the intention that gave rise to this community. We want to keep scrolling. The last slide, and then we'll open it up to questions. We did want to have some neighborhood communication on this, so we reached out to the planning department and sent a letter to everyone that the planning department sent a letter to, because we wanted everyone who was hearing about this to also hear from us, know who our team was, and be able to contact us directly if they had any questions. So this is the letter we sent out. I didn't have any direct inquiries, but also had Mr. Combs's information here, and he had a few phone calls. We also had some folks that showed up at Planning Board last month and asked some good questions, and I don't see them here tonight. So I guess that means that their questions were answered either in the hearing or we stayed after and talked to some folks in the lobby as well. So those questions, just so you know, were about the, the natural area and separation between these homes and our neighbors to the north. And then we had some questions about what the houses would look like, what quality they would be. So I feel like between seeing the homes in space, all that green space we saw, we can go back to that slide, that, that is done again and very intentionally to make this low-density, to make it in keeping with everything around us, to preserve as much green as would be expected in this area, and to meet that mandate that Mr. Chu read out about preserving and increasing open space and green areas around perimeters and around waterways. So this, this is exactly the result of the goals and objectives that have been put forward by the town. And we feel like a pretty good evolution from the 2008-approved zoning that currently exists that could be built today, which would see multifamily here at a rate of one and a half units per acre, retail and office on this site. Again, that, where it's called for to just be residential in your long-range plan. So with that, I will open it up for questions. I've got Mr. Combs here, who, who is the developer. I've got also Mr. Dalton Ward here, who's the engineer that you talked with before with the sketch plan. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions?
I've got a just question about, you mentioned that there were going to be sidewalks in the community. Will the ownership of the sidewalks, the owner be the HOA itself?
It will, because these are private roads. I'm making sure I'm right about that, yes. So that'll have to be, that'll be part of what the dues maintain to keep those intact and safe.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Good.
Any other questions?
I think, I think your presentation was great, thank you. And thank you to Mr. Chu for your staff report. I was able to go back and reference the town minutes from 2008 when this was originally rezoned and notice some of the things Ms. Hodiern pointed out, that the, that there was a mixed use. The actual zoning that's in place today is mixed use, and the residential allowed is a lot more widespread than what is being proposed. As, and the density was greater as well. So thank you for putting that date in there. That helped me in my research for this.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Do I have anyone that would like to speak in opposition? I'm going to declare this public meeting closed. Do we have any discussion on the town council? Without further ado, I'll call for the vote.
Well, I, I can make a motion, and then maybe we can have discussion after that. Can I get it started with a motion?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning case 2501 PLBD-00105, located at 8070 North Carolina Highway 68 North. Rezoning from CZ PDM to CZ PDR. And this is based off the staff and Planning Board recommendation, as well as it being a good project, it seems.
If you make consistency with, with nearby uses or with the land use plan.
I'm sorry, with the consistency, what's the first thing you said?
With, with adjoining uses consistent with other developments.
It, it's.
Consistent with those.
It's.
I mean, it's compatible with it.
Okay, it's compatible with, with other areas and certainly consistent from a density basis, from what I have personally approved before. I don't know another better way to say that, but... Is there something else you'd rather me say? Because I will repeat what you said.
Well.
I think it needs to include the future land use plan.
And, and what we can do with that, and the planning board thought was relevant, that this is more consistent than the current allowed use. In other words, the current zoning is, is less consistent with the land use plan than this request is.
Okay.
So you are increasing consistency with the long, long, long use.
And, and I would also add that with the rezoning of this property to conditional use PDR, that this would actually be more consistent with the land use plan than its current use.
Mr. Winfrey, we can't say it's consistent with the, the other uses in the area since it's our first twin home community. I, I don't, I don't want to get the, the record confused here. I, I don't have a.
I think you better say compatible.
I don't, as previously stated in another meeting, my concern is the ones that follow on behind this that are just like it, not this one. But I already feel crowded. But it's in conformance with our future land use plan. Is that your, your contention?
Yeah, it's, I think you could find it's more consistent with the current land use plan than the current zoning is allowed.
Even, even though it's, it's inconsistent, it's more consistent than what we had, because it says here that it's inconsistent with the land use plan. I mean, that's what the report says. So since it's, it's inconsistent, but it's more consistent than what we had. I mean.
Right, and, and it is consistent with other single-family rezonings that I personally have been a part of.
Area-wise.
The density being what it is is tolerable for me.
Hey, I'm for this, I'm not against it.
Yeah, the total.
I'm against it.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that it shows, it says right here that it's inconsistent with our land use plan. So.
I'm just merely pointing out Town of Stokesdale hadn't approved any twin homes before, so let's don't fool ourselves that we have.
Well, in 2008, the town approved townhomes.
Yeah, I don't think we have any problem approving this. I just don't want to say that, I, I don't want to say the word that it's consistent with something when our planners are saying it's inconsistent. Unless he wants to change his recommendation. Well. And, you know, and I don't think he wants to do that.
Well, the recommendation is approval. The consistency statement, in my view, I mean, I'm being a little hyper-specific here, but the one, as Ms. Hodiern noted, the one kind of stipulation of the recommendation of residential that says no PDR outside of the town core is what kind of prompted my, my consistency evaluation. But it's worth noting, and you can check me on this, Chuck, but I think approval of the rezoning request would, through that action, update the future land use plan, correct?
That's right, which is. Then, oh, Lord, I don't want to crack this out.
It would become consistent.
But, for example, the subdivision I live in is PDR, whatever this is. And that was approved some 20 years ago. So, I mean, almost. At that point, the land use plan was made. Anyway, we got a motion and a second.
I do have a motion, do I have a second?
I thought he was the second. I, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
I, I do actually have a question, and maybe it's been discussed, and I just haven't been available for it. Kind of twofold. Is, are there any concerns about the amount of traffic coming out right there since you're so close to 65? And I know at one time, didn't DOT, wasn't DOT considering a roundabout right there? Is that, have you accounted for that?
Yeah, but we, we don't know. And I think what has happened in western North Carolina has changed some of their policies. So that, no one knows. But we will find out, because we can't do it without DOT's permission.
Right, but you feel comfortable, you're probably, just looking at, you're probably far enough away that it's not going to have a major impact if it does.
They, they will look and all that. And that, when we hire the traffic engineer that, which I think in your package, you should have a copy of that.
Yes, we do.
And that will be turned into DOT, and then DOT will come to us. That means they can change something that they think is unsafe.
And I'll just add for the record, our entrance is, is further south than the previously approved.
approved one.
Okay.
So it does, I think, probably move it further south for that exact reason. And our trip generation is, is just showing a total, both AM and PM peak, combined exit trips of just 16 in the morning and 10 in the evening. So the trip generation is relatively low.
Right. Yeah, I just, just looking at the, I know we've talked about that roundabout and the proximity, so I just want to make sure.
Yes.
I demand a separate presentation. Once this gets to DOT, even though we had a third-party traffic engineer look at it, all of that could have changed, but the right ways there for them would make us do whatever they want to do.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrath?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I am aye.
I am also aye.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll move on to the next rezoning. This is a conditional rezoning case 25-02-PLBD-00107. This is 8299 and 8297 ZZ Walter Combs Way, from AG Agricultural to CZHI, conditional zoning, high industrial. Mr. Two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you mentioned, well, let's see, what didn't you mention? So it, as, I guess, as you mentioned, it's a conditional rezoning application, and another conditional rezoning application. And the applicant is requesting to rezone the property from its current zoning of AG Agricultural to CZHI, conditional zoning, heavy industrial, with the following conditions. This is going to take a minute. The use conditions, as proposed, are, number one, horticultural specialties under the agricultural uses category. Under the accessory uses and structures category, we have accessory uses and structures, customary, caretaker dwelling, emergency shelter, recycling collection point, satellite dish slash communication tower. Under educational and institutional uses, we have ambulance service, fire station, government office, police station, neighborhood, and post office. Under the business, professional, and personal services category, we have engineering, architect, or survey service, equipment rental and leasing with outside storage, equipment repair heavy, equipment repair light, landscape and horticultural services, truck and utility trailer rental and leasing light, truck tractor and semi, and semi rental and leasing heavy, and truck washing. Under the retail trade category, we have building supply sales with storage yard. Under the wholesale trade category, we have agricultural products, other, farm supplies, other, flowers, nursery stock and florist supplies, forest products, hardware, lumber and other construction materials. And we have, under the transportation, warehousing, and utilities category, recycling processing centers, refuse and raw material hauling, utility company office, utility equipment and storage yards, utility lines and related appurtenances, utility services facility with no outside storage, utility substation, warehouse, general storage enclosed. And under the manufacturing and industrial uses category, we have concrete, cut stone, and clay products, contractors with no outside storage, contractors for general building, contractors for heavy construction, contractors for special trade, wood containers, and miscellaneous wood products. And finally, under the other uses category, we have temporary construction, storage, or office, real estate sales, or rental office with concurrent building permit for permanent building, and finally, Christmas tree sales. And no development conditions have been offered. Moving on.
If I might, just briefly, at the zoning board, the, in response to questions from the Planning Board, the applicant removed two of those uses from his proposed uses, the truck washing and the refuse hauling. Those two uses were removed from the list that he submitted. And I think, Robbie, you received, the applicant submitted those changes in writing. Is that correct?
Thank you, Chuck. I guess I will move on to the land use analysis for this one. The recommendation for this particular property is professional slash manufacturing corridor, which is described in the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan as being intended to provide an area for the growth of office space and light manufacturing that is consistent with current uses. The corridor would start at the eastern edge of the town core on US Highway 58, follow US Highway 58 East, and terminate at the intersection of US Highway 158 and US 220. The northern and southern borders of the professional slash manufacturing corridor are identical to the borders of the Sina Corridor. It's noted in the plan that currently this portion of the US Highway 158 contains industrial, highway, business, office, residential, and agricultural areas, and no new industrial areas are proposed due to the number of areas currently zoned but undeveloped. In summary, staff recommends approval of the request. Approval is reasonable because there are several other industrially or commercially zoned properties in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. The proposed conditional zoning district would permit many commercial and industrial uses, which have the potential to benefit the community through creation of jobs and provision of goods and services. And the request is considered by staff to be consistent with the Future Land Use Plan recommendation of professional slash manufacturing corridor. Thus, if approved, a future land use plan amendment would not be required. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council from Mr. Two?
Not right now.
I'll declare our public meeting, public hearing. We are open. Do we have anyone that would like to speak in favor?
Good evening. Bill Greco with Land Solutions here this evening, representing the owner and applicant of the property. My mailing address is PO Box 347 in Oak Ridge. Similar to the previous case, thank you guys for holding a special call meeting and get us back on schedule as best as you could. This property, our owner has decided to start looking into development options, what he may or may not want to do going forward. As such, we went through the uses. These uses have now been vetted, I think this is about the fifth time. Obviously, I looked at it pretty closely, as did the owner. Our staff caught a few uses in there, and then as Mr. Winfrey mentioned, at Planning Board, there was discussion on two specific uses that we removed. So at the end of the day, you know, zoning is what it is. We're trying to be broad and narrow at the same time. There's a number of uses, obviously, that we've struck, dozens. These are ones that we think fit well on this site. This site's pretty straightforward. There's a, I will mention, there's a, I think you can still see it on that slide right there, the red outline. A portion of this property is actually in Guilford County. So subsequently, we would come back with a voluntary annexation for that little triangle. It's where they realigned Walter Combs Road. That used to be the jurisdiction line between Stokesdale and Guilford County. They redid that intersection, so that little triangle is just a little orphan. It's in Guilford County. Other things of note about this site, as Mr. Two mentioned, it does, it is consistent with the land use plan. If you look at the screen there, you've got P, if you stand at the front of this property, you've got PSI to the right, you've got a mini storage facility to the left, you've got a utility substation directly across the street. And if you lean out a little further and look up and down the right of way, of course, you've got the quarries right down there to your left, intersection with 220s very nearby. We did reach out to our neighboring property owners, spoke with a few, had no objections. We did not have anybody in opposition at the Planning Board. No one came forward there. So staff recommends approval. It's consistent with the plan. The Planning Board has recommended approval, and we certainly hope you folks will tonight as well. I'm here for any and all questions you may have of me.
Council have any questions?
Mr. Greco, can you back up to the .81 acres that is in Guilford County? Did you say that you were planning on having that voluntarily annexed by the Town of Stokesdale? Yeah. That appeals to me, just for the simplification of things, and.
Well, we would like to have a, you know, consistent tax parcel, consistent regulation. There's inherently nothing wrong with split zoning or split jurisdictions, other than if you can eliminate it, it's smart. So we're going to do our best to eliminate that.
Well, my gut is that that would be best for the town, and maybe best for the property owner here.
Absolutely.
So are you offering that as a condition?
Oh, we can make it a condition, absolutely.
Mr. Winfrey, is that okay?
Sorry, what was the condition?
We will apply for voluntary annexation of the portion of this property that currently lies within Guilford County.
Before you do that, let me ask you a question. Can Guilford County block that?
No.
They can't?
They cannot.
Because I wouldn't want to put you in a.
No, no, they can't, they can.
Okay. I didn't know. I know that Summerfield was talking about something one time, and they, I thought they, I don't know what happened. You probably know. But I just wouldn't want to put you in that position if that lady catches you. Yes, and to answer your question, if the applicant offers as a condition, that he will, he will, well, I mean, you want it rezoned tonight, though, right? So the application, you make an application, and it would have to be processed.
There is an application. I'm fairly certain there's a fee as well. I don't know if, I'm pretty sure it's a public hearing as well. I probably wouldn't.
It's like a couple of hundred bucks.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't remember here the exact piece, but yes, we would make that a condition.
I don't know how this plays into this, but currently, the Town of Stokesdale's policy is not to extend our water mains outside of the Town of Stokesdale.
Correct.
And so depending on how this is ultimately configured, and where the water may need to go and so forth, that could be beneficial to the property owner to annex it, to have our water available there for the whole site.
Correct.
Any other questions?
So I guess to answer your question, if he offers that as a condition, you can accept that as a condition, if you want to accept that. Just know that there may be some months of lag between the time that he makes the application and when it actually gets annexed. So there's no guarantee he'll have it.
I understand. I'm just seeing it as a win-win for everybody. Everybody wants to be part of our town, you know? And so why not?
How about this? If council would indulge me, we would, we would offer a condition that simultaneously with site plan approval, we will apply for voluntary annexation of the Guilford County jurisdictional piece of this parcel. That way, we kill, kill two birds with one stone. We don't have to hearing.
And then the initial zoning for that piece would mirror, is, there would have to be an initial zoning, right?
Right. You would first have a hearing on, on the annexation. At the next meet, at the same meeting, you could actually have a hearing on what the initial zoning would be.
Yeah, can, can we do this in such a way that he doesn't have to come back to rezone that tiny piece of land with .81 acres? That that's a condition of tonight's rezoning, that it would have the same zoning? That would save Mr. Greco and the owner a step here, would it not?
Yeah, that's right. So you could, so when you have an annexation hearing, assuming the application gets submitted, it gets to you. At that same meeting, you have a second hearing on what the initial zoning for this property would be after annexation. So in other words, when you annex it, you first annex it, then you decide on initial zoning. So it could be at the same meeting, but it be a separate hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I follow. But let's just, make it easy on everybody here.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions?
So he needs to offer what he wants to offer. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I guess he's being, he's being right.
We're not imposing any condition on him. At least I'm not. Just whatever you want to do.
I think we have it now. Robbie, you're recording, right?
I am recording, yeah.
So we would offer a condition that we will apply for voluntary annexation of the Guilford County jurisdictional piece of this parcel at the same time we submit a site plan. And that would actually be, site plan has to come here or no? It does.
Well.
It's just planning, but it's a major site plan. It's going to be here. So.
Planning board.
Yeah, planning board. So we get it done all at once. We'll have to open and close two public hearings, one for annexation and one for.
Right.
Original zoning.
Well, the annexation piece might have to come to this governing body, but the site plan would be the plan. I'm cool with it. I mean, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think we got it.
Whatever he's offering.
Okay.
What tax parcel?
It's on the top of that list of conditions proposed.
Yeah, it will be.
And Bill?
Tax parcel.
The triangle piece, that truly is just one parcel. No.
The property line itself is just here.
I'm trying to figure it out. I believe 554.
Okay.
That's the one we're talking about.
This is Stokesdale.
Okay, so that, that separates the jurisdiction, not the property itself. Okay.
Correct. Yeah, this Walter Combs used to come out this way.
Point 818.
Okay.
They realigned to get that at a better intersection.
Do we, we done with you?
I understand.
Any other questions?
He was done a minute ago. I just.
I thought he was. Do we have, do we have anyone, do we have anyone to speak in opposition? If we don't have anyone to speak in opposition, Mr. Foye, would you like to make a motion?
Well, one second, because I need to, I'm writing this down. So the law says this additional condition he's been writing. So let me finish writing, have Mr. Greco sign it.
All right, go right ahead.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
So how was everyone's Easter? So how was everyone's Easter?
Busy.
Everybody get to hide their eggs? You guys are humorless.
My kids hid, or my daughter hid ours, and I made strict direction to her to find them, so I didn't mow them next week.
Well, y'all might be interested to know, I was able to hide all of mine on Saturday, and I found all but six of them on Sunday.
So does that account for 6% memory loss, or if you forgot where you hit the other six?
See, I couldn't remember. It was a nice thing about getting older.
Probably a little bit.
No, no. Okay, so for the motion, I guess I would ask that the motion include, A, the revised uses that Mr. Greco had originally agreed to be removed, and Mr. Wagner has that written document with Mr. Greco's signature, I believe. So that would be included in the motion, that that, those additional conditions or uses be disallowed. And then they, then he's also written that the applicant will apply for annexation of the .81 acre portion of tax parcel 220554 at the same time that any site plan for tax parcel 220554 is submitted. So I guess the motion, if I could ask the motion to include those two uses are not allowed in this additional condition.
Okay, I can read a motion, and you can help me once again. You did such a good sound the first time around.
Mr. Foye?
All right. I make a motion to approve rezoning case 2502 PLBD-00105 from AG Agriculture to CZHI, conditional use, heavy industrial. This is based off the staff recommendation, Planning Board recommendation, and that it is, the consistent use, the uses are consistent with neighboring properties and those properties within the town's industrial corridor. Of note, the applicant has removed the conditional uses of a truck washing statement, a truck washing station, as well as the refuse waste part. And lastly, the applicant has agreed to add a condition that the, that the portion of partial 220554 that is located in unincorporated Guilford County, the applicant would apply for voluntary annexation.
the applicant would apply for voluntary annexation at the time of the submittal of the site plan for this. All right.
I would, I would, I would, I would like, I would like to clarify, be sure that the rezoning case is two, five, dash, zero, two, dash, PLBD, zero, zero, one, oh, seven.
That is correct.
One oh seven.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Ford.
I do have one quick note, uh, before anything else. I don't know if it's gonna change anybody's calculation or anything like that, but just for point of clarity, I think the order of operations, uh, again, just so we're all on the same page, when the site plan comes in for review, it will be Guilford County staff that reviews. Uh, and we will, I don't know if this is the plan, Mr. Greco, but the, if the annexation has not occurred by the time, and the rezoning, the initial zoning has not occurred by the time the site plan comes in, the site plan will need to be reviewed with the understanding that the portion that's currently in Guilford County isn't, does not permit any of these uses, cannot be utilized for any project that contains any of these uses. So it would be, it would basically have to be untouched, or that whole process would have to play out before. So the site plan could, depending on the specific plans, could kind of be in limbo for a minute while the, the annex. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I seconded the motion.
Okay, Mr. Joneses.
Motion, Mr. Mayor.
Say again?
I'll just repeat it. Go ahead.
Mr. Ford, Mr. Ford, does any, uh, does the motion need to contain the intent that the annexed property will have the same zoning as the bulk of the property that we're rezoning tonight? Have we got that covered? I'd like to make it as easy as possible so that there's not, uh, some snafu here, and Mr. Greco has to pay again. We gotta advertise the thing, we gotta go through all of this just to rezone the point eight one acres that we would be rezoning tonight if it were in Stokesdale.
Well. I think you'll have to wait, um, on the initial rezoning.
Well, the, when we hear the voluntary annexation, can we designate it as the same zoning as the adjoining property at that time? I don't, I don't know how that, how that works.
Yeah, yeah, so there will be, it could be the same meeting, but a different hearing, so the first hearing would be, are we gonna annex it?
Okay.
And then, then you have a second hearing immediately after that to determine what the initial zoning of that property.
So the minute it's part of Stokesdale, w- we get to decide what the initial zoning is.
Correct.
And so since hopefully we'll remember, uh, we'll be able to take care of it at that point. All right, thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Okay, our public hearing is closed, and I will call for the vote. Mr. Rigsby?
Uh.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. We open up for public comment, if you would, anyone that would like to speak, let me, the, two, three minutes? No, no one, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, I make a motion that the Stokesdale Town Council enter into a closed se- session of the, in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three dash, one, three, dash, three, one, eight, dot, one, one, A, three. The purpose of the closed session is to consult with attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir, a second.
A motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I am aye.
And I am aye.
Hey, Jim?
Perfect.
Here's the.
That'll work.
Written condition.
That works for me, that'll work. I'll put that, I'll add it to the file.
Yeah, how you doing?
Good, doing good, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, it's okay, I'm gonna be good, I'm gonna be good.
We hacked that.
That's right.
Pink right up is good, so I think the applicants are pleased, are set pass.
I was fixing to get up and run out the door. I was about to get out the closed session.
I was gonna run out the door, I forgot about the closed session.
Yeah.
Things to do.
Sorry, I forgot someone.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Oh, my God, I mean, okay, I was a fan, and we get to all the doings, and I watched TV, you know, and it starts, it's getting, uh, the thing is real loud.
Yeah, yeah.
And then that's all I can hear, I was like, oh, my God, you're in TV, and I cannot get to sleep. And he watched the first two ser- series, I think. And I haven't been sitting there, but I'm watching, and we've got started watching, so now I'm trying to watch it from season one up to where we're starting, so on season two, and we're actually on season one, and I'm good watching it, and it's like, okay, you need to turn off, because that would be a good one.
Well, you know, there's a spinoff.
Uh, we've been here.
Well, yeah, okay, so Young Sheldon was a. Well, yeah, okay, so Young Sheldon was a spinoff from Big Bang.
Okay.
Now, there's a spinoff from Sheldon.
Really?
And it's Georgie and Mandy's first marriage, and that comes on Thursday nights. So that's Sheldon's big brother. And his, what's now wife. But I don't spoil it for you, because they probably haven't gotten through. And Georgie and Mandy got together.
Jimmy, you've seen something about, um, about Georgie in here?
Yes.
So it's called?
It's, it's Georgie and Mandy's. It's Mandy and me. And it's more than me and this, Georgie and Mandy's first marriage. And I said. Actually, so Georgie hooked up with this girl. Right?
Mm-hmm.
And had a one night stand, and she got pregnant.
Okay, because one girl was eight now, she knows she's pregnant, because she took pregnancy, yes. Because then it started, but he was still in high school.
Yeah, well, he's, he still was in high school, but he had told this, he'd told Mandy that he was, well, he never told her. Turns out, Mandy's like ten years older than he was.
Oh, wow.
And so that was. Part of it, so it's, it's funny, but we watched that all the time. But I don't spoil.
So it comes on?
Thursday nights, eight o'clock.
What channel is that?
CBS.
CBS?
Yeah. So it goes, Thursday nights are hard for me to miss, because it's. It's, um, Georgie and Mandy at eight, eight thirty is Ghost, do you ever watch Ghosts?
I've seen it before, but it's not, I don't get regular TV, but I think that can get CBS on, uh, for a month. Abs.
Yeah, and then, um, at nine o'clock is Matlock.
Oh, my goodness, well, it's Matlock.
Oh, my goodness, this is so good, and they end the finale, the season finale was a two hour thing last week. And then after Matlock is Elson. Which is another attorney kinda thing, it's crazy, it's crazy, that's, that's a good show, too. But, you know, we like Matlock.
And Jimmy, you've seen something about. So is Georgie's sister? In the album?
Yes, yes, Missy, just that parts in Georgie and Mandy, she was in the last, she was in last week's, she married my mom. And with a boyfriend.
Now, it, it, it's silly, but it's like, oh, I, I can see how Young Sheldon, you know, my last nerve being working in the school system.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, it's like, right, it's crazy.
But it's funny, though, because Young Sheldon, they did try to incorporate some of the storyline from Big Bang Theory. You know, the later years of Big Bang.
See, I don't even saw Big Bang Theory.
Well, you can see if you want to.
Yes, we're watching this one, we're watching this on Netflix, the one about Young Sheldon.
Yeah. And then there'll be stuff on Facebook that will say, you know, when this episode of of Georgie and Mandy, let me explain to you why it went this way. Because they were, you know, playing off of this. It's real funny, because, um. When Sheldon, in Big Bang Theory, Sheldon and Amy got married. They introduced Amy's parents. And the lady that's playing Matlock and Amy. But she was her mother, and you know, Pin and Teller, the magician, the magicians? One, I can't get my, one of them's tall, it's all like, almost like Mike Jeff, one's Pin and Teller. Well, one of them does all the talking, the tall one does all the talking, and the short one is, doesn't say a word, he says assist. Well, he was the dad, he, he was, uh, Amy's dad, and the lady that plays Matlock, yeah, was her mother.
Like Jimmy, now we'll sit there and watch this person arrive. Gosh, this person, I mean, who did this person remind me of? It's like people, like, um, Sheldon's dad reminds us of, this guy that goes to our church while, you know, the company, John Graham. But it's like, and, but he kind of reminds me of somebody else, who, like, he covered it out, and then it's like, he said that, um. It's on like, or Sheldon's mom's name.
Yeah.
What was that?
Okay, but you know, she's actually the daughter of. Um. Yeah. Get hold of such.
I've got this. Jimmy sent me something I think about her being the daughter of.
Yeah.
So maybe it, it showed on, um.
Oh, uh, Roseanne? Roseanne, I know the Roseanne show.
Mm-hmm.
Roseanne's sister on her show was Sheldon's mom in Big Bang.
Okay.
And her mom. And now, in Young Sheldon, Sheldon's mom is actually her daughter. That's why their similarities are so consistent, I mean, their features and their actions and everything just are so similar to what Sheldon's mother was on Big Bang.
Or like Jimmy said, that Sheldon's mom reminds him, if you just look at her, of Rachel, who kind of resembles.
Yes, yes, yeah, they can match.
And then it was, um. Oh, and he's like, her mom is, it's like, she looked weird, and he says, she and Anna Potts.
Yeah, Annie Potts.
Annie Potts played on Design Lab, and it's like.
Yes, yes.
It was crazy.
Oh, oh. And Grant Nelson, that was Annie Potts' boyfriend.
Played on Coach.
Was Coach.
And, yeah.
And Reba's in it.
Yeah, Reba, yeah, they were named.
And Rex, and Rex Lynn is in it, he's the principal at the high school.
Yeah, I remember he played him, but I never, ever seen him.
Well, but now, well, Reba and Rex Lynn are a couple. Real life.
Oh, okay.
And now here on the new Reba show, or Happy's Place, have you seen that?
I haven't seen it.
It ain't as good as Reba, no. And we started watching it.
What's, what's the professor's name, the one that went crazy? I'm terrible at naming, I don't remember. We're trying, we were trying to, who people mind, it was, uh.
The professor?
That got, that dated, um. The grandmother.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, 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 he, it's, um.
Yeah, Jimmy, look at him, look, but it's like, he, um. And he reminds me of something, too. And then the other professor, that that professor's boss at the.
Yes.
At the college, he, I've seen him play quite a few different things before. I've heard of him, I was saying. Pickle, not pickle, I think.
It's something like that, like.
Cause it kept making me think, cause he actually looked like Ryan's, my son's, you know, there's a doctor. Who's anyone, uh, his name was Doctor Pickleson.
Pickleson. I saw KP moved a lot of that stuff in front, in front of the shop.
Oh, yeah, well, he moved all the cars, because he agreed to hit the lot. He, um, they rented that piece of equipment, whatever that. Bomb cap, or not bomb cap, whatever it's called, that little skid steer, whatever.
Oh.
And he.
Smoothered it out.
Cut down some trees right there, knocked those trees down, then he got some asphalt stuff to help.
Oh, that's all from that, yeah, I just went by it this morning real quick, I said, oh, look what JP did here.
But he's out here being parked out the field, so he can get all that done.
Gotcha. I saw they put a sign up, up there for Rynick. Story.
Oh, I saw it, too.
And you know those two big, um, acreages, those two big pieces of land?
Yeah.
Up there, those two fields, according to Realtor dot com, they're pining.
Oh, really? He's on that available being in.
Yes, yeah.
Hmm.
But, you know, they're right adjacent to.
Mary, is that another name?
Yes. Yes, Mary, exactly. Zoe Perry is, is, um, yeah, is the daughter. God. Oh, yeah, and Barbara Jean. So, Young Sheldon. Um, what is the justice name?
Missy?
The, the next door neighbor.
Oh, the little chubby kitty?
Yeah, the little chubby kitty, his mom, the blonde.
Yeah.
Well, she is in Reba, too. She's Barbara Jean. I had forgotten about her. So Reba. Reba's ex-husband was a dentist. And Barbara Jean was an assistant or an L I K E or something. He had a affair, ended up divorcing Reba, and going with Barbara Jean, but they like lived next door to each other. And Barbara Jean wants to be Reba's best friend. And this was a, a sitcom fifty, um, twenty years ago now, which is hard to believe.
So. Uh, Young Sheldon's dad's saying he is George also, is he?
Yes. Yes.
Cause he died in this sister series, Jesus.
And he's good, I really like, you know, Lance Farmer. He's really good.
He does look like, I'm sure he's in one.
Doesn't he not?
Yes, he does.
Yeah. There's.
My pastor Jim, that is Billy Sparks.
Yeah, yeah. There's Paul Shaw.
Yes, Doctor Sterns.
Sturgis. Yes.
Sturgis.
And then, there's me. Okay, maybe a woman, maybe, uh, here's Melissa Parham.
I think she's the one that plays.
Yeah, she is Billy's mom.
I mean, that was.
And then next to Billy's.
Billy's mom, but that's not.
Yeah. But Melissa Peterman plays Billy's mom. And then. So, well, Young Sheldon, Melissa Peterman, Reba, Rex Lynn. All working. Um, Young Sheldon. And now on, or then we then turn Reba.
There's Doctor Grant.
Yes. And he's seventy five years old.
Wow.
Where we used, oh, sometimes, we used to watch the Game Show Network. And. And we used to do Pyramid. And we watched that, Michael Strain. And we'd see some of the stars on that, but my favorite one was, um. Um. The one had, uh, can you remember? I think. Matthew. Remember that, they had three across the top and three across the bottom, and Richard Dawson was in it. And, uh, Brett Summers, Nipsey Russell.
Yes.
Charles Messer, Nelson Riley. Um, but I'd sit there and I'd, I'd look at it, it was like, Max Game seventy four. Or something, I'd sit there and I'd look at Mark, and I'd sit there, I'd get upset because something yelled at me.
Still doesn't say his name, it's like, why, the linebacker?
No, I'm sure they all. That's amazing, that's more than I were. That's a job, I chose something. Did you ever watch Billy Go Down Hill? Didn't, um. Uh, was that first one that he was on, he was a cop, he was a big old fat girl.
He on most places in it?
Even more.
Young Sheldon.
He made that a bit long.
I, I saw the Night of the Ass Ball.
Oh, yeah, oh. They had one episode that, um. Microsoft.
Hillgate?
Yeah. I'm doing, I'm sitting here, and you love sitting there, I just can't remember things now. Yeah, I don't like to watch Ray on TV, I met Ray in real life.
Really?
Yeah. In real life, after concerts, she was buried pretty properly, and on the TV, she's cornball. It was just. I don't like her on the TV. Well, I think. I don't know, it's not. I just want to.
I need to know what's special. Have a close session.
Thank you. Last minute. I was saying, I have something about the afternoon, but. It wasn't very light, it just doesn't come up. Four minutes.
Are you?
I'm trying to leave Thursday, turn back Monday. I'm supposed to get home at the first of March, but everybody can't get on the phone yet.
Yeah, early, Mother's Day, which is our anniversary. We got morning, early. I wonder, cause we have dinner elevations at nine at seven oh five, and shit. I wonder if we have dinner elevations at nine at seven oh five and Chevy. Oh my goodness.
So you had all the great children yesterday?
Yeah, we were taking these. Oh, I made a bloody cake.
That's right, that's awesome.
Jimmy laughed at it.
That's, you said your first attempt at a bun?
Yeah, and Paige sent me a picture of it, so I, you know, had it, but it's like the stuff part, you know, the eyes and the nose and the mouth and whispers. You put it on the icing and it started running.
Oh, no.
So if it hadn't run, it wouldn't have looked like it. I didn't use jelly beans for the vodka, I used peaches and sprinkles. It tasted good. I cooked the cake a ton before, and just wrapped it before we did the platters. And they just, we're on pace for it, and then I sliced it up and then I waited and iced it when I got the J P's problem, like. How heavy were the period? Without this stuff to ice it, you know, so. And then I had three kids being around, so I kind of iced it, so I was just like. Kind of like, you know, like, unsure of everything. But it was still, I had to start this, start the program, and I'm like, next time I'll get. I'm actually on beach and cars and, you know. It got some.
I can tell you what eyelids on, but it might be.
Through all the. Oh my goodness.
What really misses is, yes, you know, they show up where stuff is, but it showed up to like the C V S in, in Ugridge. And the C V S there in front of Bear's Theater, or Hobson.
Really?
Yeah, of course, of course, we had to. Just like that.
I've never been to, like, another food line or something, or Bear's Theater. And I'll go to a certain one and then I'll go to a different, I'm like, uh, keep finding it now.
Yeah. And I'm going to Walgreens, you know, Walgreens, up there somewhere, you know. Like, I'm looking for a card or something, or a better Christmas, or a couple of pairs or something. I'll go to Walgreens because they've got a better card selection than the C V S. Rather than go all like, all the way.
How good, dollar bill, dollar tree, you know, card, especially when it's cheap.
Yeah. The regional manager. Another job. Said, he used to take his card, he doesn't do it. He'd take it to the Walmart shop and pick out a card and let her read it here and put it back in the shop. Because that, that pay note for a dollar is getting kind of expensive.
I mean, uh, dollar bill, I have like two per dollar, for different ones, I mean, especially when it comes to cards for the kids.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, like, I was seeing Christie and, and her husband, his birthday was, I. I'm getting sent a gift card. Well, if you put a gift card in a birthday card, you gotta pay extra price.
Really?
Yeah. Because I don't just put the card in the, you know, the card and it comes out.
Oh, yeah.
And so I puts it up out of the white letter.
I don't know what's that.
So it's, it's still, what is it, seventy some cents, seventy-three, seventy-four cents now, it's, takes it up to like a dollar and seven or a dollar and eight cents.
That's, that's what you say.
Uh-huh. That's why you get.
A long time since I've milked something.
Yeah.
I was like Ryan and you, on their birthday, I got him, during Christmas, I got him, like, Ryan, fifty Disney gift cards. And I was gonna email and I sent it to him, and then, um, that would have been her. Sparkles, I think, or her birthday, I don't know. Here's your gift card.
Looking at grandsons. They say. Gabriel turns twelve. And Elijah will be fourteen. They're like twenty-two months old or something. You gave out for, well, everything they want is three, four hundred dollars.
That looks so different, they didn't care. See those big holes up in the soccer films?
Yeah.
Are you sushi eating?
Can I imagine. Oh. We got some. And Charles, they just split, uh, turkey breast, one hundred and fifty.
Mm-hmm.
So we got, she got three pounds of split, so we got a pound of that piece. And I made Rachel sandwiches. You ever had Rachel?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Rachel is like a roomie, but with turkey instead of corned beef, or instead of corned beef. So it's turkey and coleslaw and thousand island dressing and Swiss cheese on library. And toasted, and that was really good.
Give me probably like, I called off the salad, I didn't know where it's.
I understand. Well, and I'm thinking about my coleslaw too, and I got it from, I'm like, uh, it wasn't exactly, because I, there's, it's okay on hot dogs, but it wasn't the best. On the nation, but should have gotten something different. But, um. Nancy and Fix, corned beef, um, in Cadbury, or Saint Patrick's Day, we had some corned beef left over, and so we made rillings. With the corned beef and Swiss, the thousand island dressing and sour bread on library. And that really was good. We had, every time.
She was horrible, rilling sandwiches. Jimmy's eaten a couple times, but I'm not even a sour bread.
Would eat sour bread on hot dog?
Uh-huh.
I mean, you don't eat relish on hot dog either.
I would eat relish on hot dog, but I don't eat slum on hot dog.
Do I?
Because it, uh, I learned it's something. The, the relish will make, can make it soggy too. I haven't had relish on hot dog.
I still may try. Put some peanut butter and mayonnaise on a hot dog.
With the hot dog being?
Yeah.
I put mayonnaise on a hot dog. Mayonnaise, ketchup, chili, and then. And we went to Johnson's twice this past year.
No, you didn't.
That's full, we went, I'll say, Monday I had to work in the. Tuesday I had to be at the doctor, got my foot, it ain't close, we left from there and went down to Johnson's, but it worked Tuesday. And then Wednesday, I worked all day, like, Thursday. I worked, I had a, a new customer for a highlight, and then I finished there and the dog went to Boone with Dana Boone.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, and then Friday, on.
You turned around and came back.
Friday, we actually, when we left there, we went to the parks. To the shops in the park where you speak, Tanger Island.
Yeah.
And then when, when we left that there, went to the ride and went and lowered it off. Oh, man, it was beautiful, it was perfect, it was absolutely beautiful.
That's pretty.
And then Friday, I mean, I had. My husband, my regular husband, he grew up there. And Paige gave him a burger as well, and she was like, oh, it sounds like we can go to Johnson's in the end, I said, yeah, let's do it. We took off to Johnson's, and I don't remember if you get it, but it worked.
But it's, but I don't really have that.
Yeah, it was solid, she had an hour of emotion.
Well, we went to Clayton last time, we went down, that way, it's still a little turn off.
We had waited a little bit Friday, Tuesday, we did, we were about there before the other.
Uh-huh.
And then Tuesday, of course, we went up to the, 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 the Marshall's National Park, and then went to the, see that clothing warehouse that sells car park and stuff.
Uh-huh.
Got Jimmy another pair of, uh, car park jeans, or not jeans, but dress jeans, come to me jeans. And then Friday, you could, you could get a car right out again, and yes, I've had it, I'm good.
Yeah, Lucky sells cars, you know that?
You see that, no?
Yeah.
See, the, see, the warehouse sells it cheap, you can get, not, not dirt cheap, but a few dollars less than what you can get at, say, like, a tractor spot or whatever. I would love to get their, uh, pecans when they're freshly done mating, sit there and eat them, like, see if you get the car.
I'd love to get you some of that, that would make it, you know.
Get me back a little more last time, although, we were only having a little bit. I got like, two or three bags, and sat there and ate them all. Because it's, that's one of those things, you just.
You're not good when you're calm.
Yeah. We moved to Spearfield, fifty-four, up there.
That's okay.
Yeah, I think it's the biggest one, and, um, we ended up not stopping, we didn't clean it. I'll tell you what, that's the cleanest place, the bathrooms are the cleanest bathrooms I've ever seen in my life.
You know, I did like the faucet, because. You know, the twenty-four cent, they're clean, they're being set, it's been stopped and it's less, especially if you go to Florida. When you get into South Carolina, there's only one or two best stops there, I would, you know, safe stop, and they're, and they're usually at the visitors' center, because some of the other ones are, are old and are burnt up, and they're dark.
I told Jimmy, we'll go to, we'll leave, we'll go down there for taking some mail.
Mm-hmm.
I said, if she needs to stop at the bathroom, I said, you're going, you're gonna stand right outside the window of the bathroom, before he would like it. You have to get up at the bathroom if I had to go to, but he got to get outside whenever, I don't know, standing at the door. Until we, we didn't hear now.
And Washington, Georgia, Florida, Florida, okay, Georgia, Georgia's a short side, so you can, you can, no. You can usually make it all the way through Georgia. But we're gonna, we'll leave here, and we're gonna down through Rockingham, and then through Bakersfield to Florence. It's about two and a half hours, so that's usually a very good pickup. And then the trick is that from Florence, we're gonna spend the night first tonight in Brunswick. But it's, it's another three and a half hours from Florence to Brunswick, and that's a problem pushing. For the gladers. So they need to, I, I don't know, lucky, so they're, so we now stopped at the Black Rifle. Shop in Georgia. Brunswick is, Brunswick's only four hours from, um, Parrenage.
So y'all live in what, in Thursday, coming back from you?
Right. We'll, we'll get down to Brunswick Thursday night, but I'm, money will come along with that. Well, like, you know, make, make it a score, I mean. Doing all the stops and stuff, it's about twelve hours, eleven and a half. But it's really ten hours to, to stop. The good news is they got lucky to stop there, the bad news is they got lucky to stop there. Yeah, because it's about a ten minute rest, or it's a twenty minute stop.
At least. At least. The worst part is trying to get a parking place at Buckies, it's not that it's overly crowded inside, you can't get ready to double it.
Yeah.
All that, it's just, it takes forever to get a parking place, you know. And one time at a Buckies, I think it was over the floor, maybe, um, when I went in. Might be the first time I went in, somebody was coming up to the, all right, find yourself one, and trying to, you know. Yeah, well, I think, I'm pretty sure it was at, at the Buckies. And Jimmy, I don't really give a damn, Jimmy, emotions, he got me, you know, I'm in the country.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, I don't know, it's, it's, I used to go, like to go to Danny's, and it always parked across the street, you know, where it's marked. And the last few times I've been there, didn't, didn't really come getting out of the corner, it's the light comes up, and you're there. And, you know, you don't, you don't know what they want to do.
Yeah.
I don't know how businesses do it, they don't do it.
I wonder.
And now they're talking about, you know, closing the streets all for certain days, and doing those social loans, and all that kind of stuff, and I said, you know, well, unless you're back, and I, I mean, I'd be sitting outside, and I'd be very, very. And it's been two years since I've been to a baseball game.
Really?
And I loved that stadium, well, I used to love the stadium before they put all those buildings around. I liked the other one too, the other one was in worse place today.
Old, original?
Yeah, Memorial Stadium.
Yeah.
It's funny, I had a, a townhouse off of battleground, and when I first moved over here, and I had Mark in the weekends, and I'd be getting, I'd be in his mom, rather than the baseball. He'd come up Friday after meetings and take it back on Sunday after meetings. But we'd go to baseball game at Memorial Stadium, and that was before Chris was relocated, when they moved the quarter here, and she came off of, um, we noticed.
Yep.
On to the battleground, but we'd stop, we'd get a dozen donuts on the way home from the baseball game, and throw the box plate, and we got, got to the house.
I, I used to give me, tons of hot like, after two, three, and the most, I'm like, ugh, why did I do that? And they're like fourteen, fifteen dollars a dozen.
Fifteen dollars a dozen, I'm sitting there, but that's crazy, they were like seven dollars, you know. But they'd be hot in the mail, and we'd sit there, and they're just melting the mail.
They don't.
So I did take up and run them, you know, because they melt.
And I, we, last time, I think it was a month or so ago, I can't remember, yeah, I think it was near my birthday time, and Jimmy, when he likes the lemon filled, that's like.
Really?
They had raspberry, and then they had, of course, cream filled, I like the chocolate covered cream filled.
That's what he's like. Well, and I like them too, because they're almost like clakers.
I don't like the yellow custard, I like the cream, the white cream.
Oh, I like, yeah.
I don't like the yellow custard.
I like, I like the yellow custard, because they're like, lots of cream, I like, or chocolate, and Nancy likes.
I mean, I'll eat one, you know, if that's all they had versus the cream, I would eat one.
The last one, she got, she got dozen laced, and she got a half a dozen cinnamon bonds that they store in my.
How about the cinnamon?
Bonds are like three or four dollars a piece. And, and that, for the difference, we're eating some, that's just about as good as, I mean, your carbs, at least, they're not dunking, they're not, they're not cake, at least, these.
Yeah, I like the greens, um, donut holes.
Yes.
I used to go by there, and get tons of the thickened aces for extra snack, or if we were having a party, or.
Have you eaten, like, is it the poty seed, is that what the name of the deli is out there? Or writing these, what is the name of the, that's probably.
No, it's, um, overy bacon.
Bacon, yes, you do.
Yes, I have, um, the girl I work with, a lead teacher, her friend owns it, and she will place orders, and like, they'll break it to us, and no extra charge on fries. And I've had, maybe a fudger, or chicken bacon, or some, some cheese. But it's not just the bagels that I mean, they have, and actually, they, raw bagels in school, with some different sauces, and not a whole lot, we didn't, because some bagels, people that do that for breakfast, and bring a ton of bagels. And then, they have prissants, they have overrated, or, you know, different type breads, that the sandwich is on, it's not just bagels. Oh, yeah, it's, it's pretty good. Yep, Mike, one, our year's free ice cream.
Really?
Just spun the wheel, didn't land on any ice cream for a year, but we could never take the bubble bells out on Mondays. So it's like two scoops, we can get two separate scoops, and give it a mixture.
Okay.
Two scoops ice cream, a day, for a year.
A day?
You can go there, I think.
You can go every day if you want.
I think so. Or either it's a, a few times a week, but I notice at least, I know it's more than twice a week, but I think it's every day, because they're closed on Mondays. Like, wow, that's just crazy.
I like, no, I'm, I'm, a lot of places don't let it, but Ozzy's does.
I said, they're all, they're not going to park it.
Yeah.
I saw that, and, um, you want them to keep out there, that place was.
That's something.
Hey.
When the girls are here, we'll take, take a load to a care sale, like a care sale, a couple of times, and get your ice cream.
The hell with the girl.
Lady, uh, will be twelve P M, June, I think just turned eight. I think it means it's worth it, it's, it's. And I love to get young ones.
Jimmy, you can't do that, Jimmy, it's ice cream, it's not a raccoon, you know. Yes, it was wrong. When we left, um, Johnson's, we were like, you know, we could just buy a, a dollar, we, we get some, only, I like their strawberries, and you know, it's peach, because I like the peach too. Because, uh, the peach probably get the fresh, though, they're not with the, yeah. So I said, there's strawberries.
Strawberry, yeah.